Call the Dixon County Regular Commission Meeting to order, January 10, 2019. Please stand for flag salute.
Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval agenda is printed. I so move.
Second.
We move to second. Any discussion? Not all of the favors say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda, minutes of the January 3 meeting, payroll of $307,422.9, wire payments to capers and KPNF of $49,444.7, funded expenditures of $520,433.72, and abatement of $2,036.52.
I may we approve the consent agenda? Second.
We move to second. Mike, the comments on why the fund expenditures are so high, Brad, you want to just go through that real quick?
Yeah, this is early in the year and as you remember, every year, this first month or two is very heavy on contractual agreements. This particular one has our K-Camp premium unit and has quite a few of the Tyler expenses that are on that contract for the public safety and law enforcement software upgrade. So this is probably one of the biggest ones we'll have, but we'll have a couple more that will be sizable to get those agreements all in place for the year, so.
Thank you, Brad. Any more discussion? If not, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Commissioner comments ready? I'll go first today. We had the Representative Barker was in this morning, talked about the upcoming legislative session and a couple of issues that we would like to have him address for Dixon County specifically due to sale tax that will be coming up for election or bring to a vote this coming year, rather than going for five years, we could do it for, get it 10-year. And then also was a home rule for blighted properties that we have, if we could get more, if they give us some authority they gave cities to do that.
We also, after you had started down, addressed the lighting issue up in the K-15, Lynn brought that up, so.
Thank you.
I don't know that he'd be able to do anything, I didn't get that, but.
Well, and one of the things he had mentioned, that the Secretary of Transportation has not been appointed yet, so that would be a good starting point, once the governor makes that appointment. But that is something we're gonna have to pursue in an organized way.
Lynn, you want to go ahead and continue then?
Okay. The only thing, a couple of things I just thought I'd mention is, the commission had decided to give money to some of the area museums and this past week, the last one that I participated in, we gave the check to Towneage Museum and, you know, it just served as a good reminder that there's so many people that put so much into their communities and their areas and it's just a well-organized, laid-out museum up there at Towneage is certainly worth the time to go up and visit that, but it just is refreshing, refreshing look back in history of how that community came about and developed and what it is today. And so I was glad to participate on that on behalf of the commission. Also, on central Kansas mental health, I'm gonna be continuing on that board and serving as treasurer for that group. And Lavita Montgomery is the other representative from Dixon County on that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Laverne?
Well, this is my last meeting today, officially meeting, and like I say, there's a lot of things that I've thought about this last week, but I'll start out with, like last Thursday, Brad and myself and Ron went down to Harrington to present the museum with their check and also wanted to hope, I think they were very appreciative that we was able to help them out with a little bit of money. And on Saturday, the Extension 4-H program had their model meeting participation and there were clubs that presented model meetings and I think this is a very important part of 4-H is, that 4-H does is teach youth how to participate in meetings. And I'm proud to say that my old Hall and Sunfire Club won the top purple again this year for the top model meeting. I thought they did very good. I had asked not to have a retirement party for myself, but I guess the staff felt like they just had to do something, so we, and they're very appreciative that, this morning we had our department head meeting in a basement along with elected officials and we had a little cookie and donut party down there. So I do appreciate it and working with all the department heads and elected officials this past eight years has really been a pleasure for me because I felt like we all worked as a team. The two commissioners sitting on both sides have made this last six years and also for Jill and Sheila my first two years. It sure makes everything a lot better when everybody's working together and I feel like the one thing that I did mention downstairs was the department heads and elected officials pretty much were the same group of people that were here eight years ago and I think that's a real tribute to the dedication that the people in those lead positions have had and it does develop consistency and teamwork, working together. And so I think it was, like I say, a real thing that I've enjoyed being able to work with those people these last eight years and especially the ones in this room that meet every week with us. And that also includes Kathy, that she's written very good articles for us in the paper and so I just want to thank, like I say, the people that I've been able to work with. I will mention a few changes in the eight years that I've seen. I guess when I came in eight years ago, I wanted to try to improve efficiency in our operations and I felt like that was one way that we could maybe get the job done without spending more money, if we could do it more efficiently. And we've had to put some money in some programs in order to accomplish that. And one of the first things that we did with Jill and Sheila was put in the CIC program where the computer networked and that had always been a little bit of a problem is the networking of all the departments have to work together on a lot of issues and by tying the computer systems together and it was a little bit of a challenge to, whenever you do make a change like that, but I think it's really worked out well. And like I say, it, that was one of the first things that we had done. The road and bridge, we had put some extra money in there to give them the equipment that they needed to have in order to get the job done more efficiently. And I'm very proud that Martin and his crews that, like I say, were able to accomplish that and make their job easier and also be able for them to get their job done quicker and with less labor. So that's another thing I'm really proud of. Of course, we have had the security issues in the courthouse and that was kind of a controversy thing, but you know, the court system upstairs, like I say, you just can't take the risk that we were taking. And I guess the good thing about it was that we was able to configure the courthouse so that not only were we protecting them up there, but we were protecting the entire courthouse by just having one entrance where it was, where it was, in a lot of places you can't do that, but we was able to, with one security post, we was able to secure the entire courthouse, which I think was very important. And like I say, that's the.
Another thing that we have worked the last few years very diligent on, I think, is
the Economic Development Corporation that the county has started to try to develop economic development throughout the county and, like I say, I think we are just in the process of really making some good strides. And whenever you do have new businesses increase or new businesses come in, that increases your tax base and that's another way of being able to hold a mill levy if you can keep economic development and increase your tax base. And I think there's still a lot of work that will have to be continued with that, but I think just getting it started and, like I say, I think we've made some no big progress on that. Of course, the last issue that we've worked the last few years on was the renovation of the courthouse and the jail and it was a very controversy issue with a lot of people and it, I guess it was kind of hard for us to convince people that the need was there, but a lot of them just didn't want, or thought that we was going to increase their taxes a lot. And I think it was difficult to explain to them that we were very financially sound and with our business approach that we had taken in order to pay off that bond issue. And like I say, it was sort of an issue that you can kick the can down the road, but you can only kick it so far and we were getting issues that were costing us money here at the courthouse. And I think that goes back to the efficiency part of it, when we get the courthouse renovated and the new jail, the efficiency factor will really help us in the long run and it's a thing that the longer you put it off, the more expensive that project was gonna get. And so hopefully the taxpayers will see that in the future, that we were looking out for their best interest in doing some of these things that needed to be done and hopefully that will, like I say, usually those projects after they're done, everybody is more on board and sees how it works, but I think that for the commissioners on both sides and the staff and Brad's help, we, like I say, planned out a vision plan that will be very sound for the people. The other thing, I wish that people would understand, when they do pay their taxes, of all the services that that does provide to them, and a lot of times it's not just people don't need a particular service, but there's other people that do need that service. And like I say, we have updated a lot of our services and when I talk to other county commissioners at state meetings and see some of the problems that they have because they have not provided a good service. And so I think, like I say, we've done a very good job in providing these services even though a lot of people are not aware of all the services that we do provide, but there's always people out there that are in need of those services. So like I say, sometimes I feel fortunate that I haven't had to have ambulance come to my place, but there will be a time when they probably will, I'll be very appreciative when it doesn't happen to show up, so, you know, that's just, so everybody has their job and I think the teamwork that all the different departments and elected officials are working together is a very strong thing in this, like I say, it all goes together in developing a strong county government. And like I say, I lived here all my life until I got on the commission, but there's a lot of things I didn't realize that the county does and, like I say, I think that's true with a lot of people that don't understand, you know, what their tax money goes for and we'd really miss the service if it wasn't there. So like I say, I think we've had a good balance in doing that. And of course, I made the decision not to run. I felt like my eight years was kind of the extent that I wanted to go and we were very fortunate to have Ron step up and I had some really good conversations with Ron and he will be a good, good person to run in my place here on the commission, so I have no doubts that Ron's gonna do a good job. Of course, I will miss this commission, like I say, I really enjoyed working with all the staff and the commissioners and Brad, like I say, when I look back, you've been working here 34 years, I've seen in the newsletter, that's been quite a, it's, like I say, quite a commitment, but it's also shows that your leadership, it's hard to replace some of these people that have served the county for more than 20 years. So like I say, I just want to thank all the people that I've been able to work with and, like I say, just, and I will miss, I will miss coming to the commission meetings, I've enjoyed that. I appreciate the cards that I got and also this morning and Bart made me some little tokens here that I can, I guess I can put those on my Christmas tree, so. That's all I had, Craig. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, Lauren.
And Craig.
Hey, Lauren. Presentation of petitions, proclamations, and other public comments, nobody out in public. Brad, please.
Okay, we have initiated our biennial bridge inspection process for 2019. This is a year where we are required by law to go out and inspect all 303 bridges that we have and we have engaged the same individual company in same inspecting, which is swab eaten. They have given us the pricing of $120, $124 per bridge, about to exceed that number. That's extremely reasonable and if, I don't know whether, I think Laverne might remember and I don't know where it fell in with Craig and Lynn, but there was a time where we were paying about three times that per bridge and so we were able to negotiate that a few years ago with the swab eating, get that down to where it's extremely reasonable. So we've got that in place.
Mike, explain what Cathy and the people, what a bridge is, Brad.
A bridge is any, any structure that's in excess of 24 feet long, basically. And like I say, we have 303 of those. We have over 1,500 small structures in the county that are not required to be inspected, although we inspect many of them just on our own when we get reports or if we know they're bad. So again, that's part of that expense that we've referred to, benefits of keeping, keeping all those structures and bridges in good shape so that they're safe for the public to cross, so. And you virtually can't go anywhere in this county without crossing at least one, if not multiple, bridges that we maintain, so. We've received, I think, three requests from schools for the after-crowd support that we've done in the past and, as you remember, we give, typically given $500 to each school to help support their after-crowd efforts and that funding comes from the alcohol tax and that's been very well-received in years past and without any objection will be that again this year, as the other two schools give us their requests, we'll pay them the same thing, so. The Abbling Chamber banquet, I don't know whether you got an invitation or not, but it's on the 26th of February and sometime here next week or two, if you let me know or let Bart know, we'll get you RSVP. We're also preparing for the annual township meeting, which will be March 24th. And then the North Central Highway Association meeting is scheduled for April 3rd and it'll be, both of those will be at Sterling Hall. This is our year to host, so we don't have to drive very far, which I guess is nice and we're making leniency for both of those as well, so. In your package, you've got a number of items, but one of those starts with the front page says "old policy" and that is a policy that has to do with acceptable use of electronic media and communication devices. We've got one that dates back to 2013 currently and with all the changes in email and software and things of that nature, we have updated that and we have a proposed policy on the attached sheets that probably on the 24th, we'll take that up, it'll give you the next two weeks to review that. And if you have any questions or concerns, why, certainly call or email those two minutes, so. Then just to let you know, we're also in the process of checking on a replacement vehicle for the appraiser's office. They have, the appraiser's office has two vehicles assigned to them and 2019 is the year that we're scheduled to rotate one of those out that we will ultimately put on purple wing when we're done with it. And we're communicating with homes up here about what they might have available and sometime here in the next month or so, or a few weeks, we'll come back with some bids on those to replace that. We also have in the budget for this year, a replacement for Chancy's truck, so I'll go ahead and give you the heads up that we may be looking at that in the next few months. His is an '06 model, so it's 12 years old, but luckily the miles have extended it out, but it's getting to the point where the sides are rusting off of it and so it's due while there's still some value in it to rotate it out, so we'll be looking at that sometime in the future. I'm actually waiting to see, you know, we've got one ordered from Martin, it should come in any day. On the state contract, we're kind of waiting to see what that looks like because if that truck looks like what we suspect it will be, then we may turn around and look at that type of vehicle as a same option for Chancy's, so. But we kind of want to see what that looks like when it comes in, so. Also in your package, you've got, I provided the, some sample job description or evaluation forms from a couple of department lists to kind of just give you a little bit of an idea of how those go and what they look like when they're completed and then also the pay range and some samples that we talked about. Last week, I think Craig had mentioned the differences between what 2% of a budget item looks like versus 2%, where we actually, 2.5% we actually give it out. And if you look at that one chart, we can go into it in a future meeting in detail on a work session, but we actually are considerably, over the last five years, what we actually pay out is considerably lower than what we budget. And you, you may go think, well, how can that be? Well, it's because of not all positions are filled, not everybody gets the full 2% or 2.5% because of their performance reviews, so we don't, we're always underneath that budget item and Janelle can explain that here in a couple of weeks when we have a meeting where we can actually talk about it in detail, so. Doug, give you some time to kind of study that and come up with any questions that you may have, so. And I think that's all I've got, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Brad? If not, Doug, please.
February 4th at 10 o'clock will be the next tax sale and I think that's probably posted on the website and I've been the county councillor for decades, so Laverne, it's been a pleasure to work with you for the past eight years and it's gone by like that, or what it feels like to me, I suppose it does to you.
Yes.
And every commissioner that I've worked with has all been motivated to do nothing but good things for the, for the community and for the county and you've certainly fulfilled that, you've done an excellent job. Thank you for serving.
Thank you, Doug.
Any questions for Doug? If not, notice communications. We have the clerk of the district court monthly report and then I'm not sure, you might have gotten this to county newsletter?
It just came today.
Just came today, so that's all we have for mail. We have no introduction consideration resolutions, no unfinished business, the other business is considered two conditional use permits for cell towers. Tim? Which one you want to start with?
18-4. Okay, this is a cell tower, the request of AT&amp;T on 120 acre parcel of land located in Grant Township, section 19, Township 13, South Range, 2 East. Its general location is on the northwest corner of Fawn Road and 2100 Avenue. Now, that's the parcel located on the northwest corner. The actual tower itself will be located in the northeast corner of the.
Am I gonna draw a picture of this here and?
It's, I'm going Fawn.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I went wrong on there.
Okay.
I'm with you. Yep, I'm here.
And the only issue that came up with this particular request was, there was concern that the airport had about how it might impact, the location might impact any future development that they'll do out there, like they wanted to put a new runway in, in their long-range plan, well, and they told me, they said, well, the long-range plan covers about 30 years and I said, well, so I said, well, give me a, I had Jim Curtis give me kind of a scale drawing as to, you know, where that proposed runway would be and I scaled it out and I told him, I said, it doesn't look like it's gonna be anywhere near there, but I said, he said, well, if they could just put some like safety lighting on there, that would be fine. So they did that and AT&amp;T kind of lowered the height. It was, the original request was for 195 feet, they lowered it to 145 feet and they're gonna put the lighting on there. And so both staff and the planning commission are recommending approval with the condition that they install the typical FAA-approved safety lighting, they have to, they are located in a floodplain and so they will have to submit an elevation certificate completed by licensed surveyor and they'll have to submit that to staff. They'll have to raise any of their, what we call attendant utilities or any equipment that's at the ground level, they'd have to elevate to one foot above an established base flood elevation on that particular site and they've already agreed to do all of that and they're in the process of doing it. They promised they wouldn't start construction until they get all of that sorted for me, so.
I see it's self-supporting, is that proposed self-supporting?
Yeah, it's a self-supporting, 145-foot self-support communication tower.
Any other questions for Tim on this tower? Someone?
Was there a particular reason why they lowered the height of it?
The proximity to the airport, they wanted to be, I guess they did it out of, I want to say good faith effort, but I think that they decided since they were so close to the airport, they were about a mile and a half or so away from it, they just decided to, technically they, according to the federal telecommunications law, they don't necessarily have to lower it, you know, but they, they did it voluntarily, I think.
I'd go ahead and move that we approve this application for the 18-4, as long as they're in compliance with the suggestions you've outlined.
Second. Any other discussion? If not, all the favors say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Tim, next one, please.
The second one is PC 18-5. This is a cell tower to be placed on 108.3 acre parcel of land located in Lincoln Township, section 2, Township 13, South Range, 1 East, generally located 905 feet south of the southeast corner of Gere Road and 2500 Avenue and same situation, but this is 155-foot tall conopole and what they're gonna do is, staff, since it's anything less than 200 feet, the FAA does not require any lighting, so what they did is, that's why there was no condition of putting lighting on there and also I think one of the, in our own regulations, we don't, you know, we don't make it mandatory that they put lighting up and I think one of, during the public hearing, one of the comments that was made was that there were, one of the residents near there was concerned that the light would be too bright or whatever, so they, the planning commission decided just not to require it since that's not in the flight path. And so the only condition that was placed on this particular location was the setback And so the only condition that was placed on this particular location was the setback must be at least a hundred and fifty-five feet from all property lines. And that's because when I looked at their site plan and the planning commission did, it shows it right at a hundred and fifty-five foot setback, which is, and so our regulations say at least the height of the tower has to be set back. So I told them, I said, so they'll, they've agreed to do that too, so.
Any other questions for Tim on this tower? Thank you, Tim. Motion to approve this conditional use.
I move that we approve this conditional use.
Second it?
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Tim.
I'm gonna hold off if you want to make the last motion.
I could do that.
I'll give you my gavel.
As soon as the chair allows us to speak.
Yeah, let's hope that stops people for it.
Tim, can I motion adjourn?
I move adjourn. Second.
Gonna move to second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Can't adjourn. Hold your claws.